We're okay to continue? We don't need any breaks right now, do we?
No, no.
That's good for another meeting day.
Okay, it is 6:30. I will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. First up, public works and maintenance, public utility rates.
So at the last meeting of council, there was a recommendation to move forward with first reading of the proposed bylaw, and there were some questions that came back as a result, and council had asked to meet with the engineering departments, so we've got Joey and Sam and Chris here to speak on behalf and answer the questions you may have.
Okay. I think some of the questions surrounded the fact that a little bit of reality was going to set in, and we'd be going to the ratepayers of our community asking for some pretty hefty increases in terms of utility rates, and so I think one of the things I was thinking about is there not a way to kind of step into that without plunging in with both feet? And maybe a bit of an explanation for the community as to why?
I totally get where you guys are coming from and where we need to go, and I understand that, and I was one of the people who kind of stepped back and was like, whoa, like, I didn't know we actually decided we were ready to like move forward with the three-year plan, and I guess I just feel that essentially this money is coming from the ratepayers on one end or the other, whether it comes from them through taxation, or it comes from through the, or from them through us sending them their water bill. It just might, they're already used to the tax bill that they get in the mail, and we've been really good at managing not to increase taxes, and this year even bring it down just a little bit depending on how your assessments went, so I just feel like it might be easier for people to eat that if it's over a little bit of a longer time, say five to seven years, as opposed to three years, and I mean, we can brag that we have the highest municipal and school taxes in the province, which isn't something so great to brag about, but we can also brag that we have some of the lower utility things, so to go from being like, you know, the second lowest in the province to the second highest in the province in three years is again, a bit much for me to swallow, and I feel like if it's a bit much for me to swallow, it's obviously going to be a bit much for the taxpayers to swallow, so just to see if there's a way, like Jim said, to kind of ease them into it more so than in three years they're going to be paying whatever the, I don't remember exactly what it is, but whatever the percentage is more in water, it's a little bit easier for people to eat that if it's over a longer course of time and it's gradual as opposed to so quick. Again, I understand where you guys are coming from, and you're probably totally frustrated with us because we sat here and had a big long conversation, and now we're like, let's come back and do it all over again, but...
Well, that's fine. Maybe to speak on a few points. So the title, like the three-year, right now, our utility rate is a two-step system, right? So if you use 20,000 gallons or less, you pay one rate, which is $11. But let's say if you use over 20,000, now you get to pay $7. So what a lot of communities are doing, and what PUB is kind of pushing for as well is to have one rate, so it doesn't matter how much you use. You use a million gallons or you use 1,000 gallons, everybody's going to pay the same amount, so $11. So the three-year is not necessarily we're going to increase it over three years and make it really expensive, it's basically over three years what we're doing is collapsing those two, that two-step tier into one. So, you know, the typical homeowner, they're not going to see that increase, but it's the people who are using more water are going to see that increase. And prior to this, we were looking at a longer rate, which was like 15 years to collapse the two-step system. And unfortunately, all that was going on is that the people who were using, you know, under 20,000 were seeing 11% increase, and the people who were using over 20,000, they're seeing a 6% increase. So realistically, it's the people who have their house and everything else who are going to have the huge increase, and everybody else who's using, you know, hundreds of thousands and millions of gallons, because we have some consumers of that, are going to get the credit. So based off of what I've discussed with PUB and a few other communities, is to have that system reduced into three years, not over 15. So that kind of sees that, so maybe that kind of is the smooth over that, you know, maybe you're looking for, but maybe not.
What's an average residential consumption?
Depends on how many people live in the house. For example, for myself, I mean, with two people living in a house, I can use anywhere between 10,000 to 8,000 gallons. Me living by myself, for some reason, I use 16,000 gallons, not sure why. But that's, you know, and then if you have a family of four and five, we typically see somewhere around 20,000 gallons. I mean, depends on the house, depends on how many kids you have, how many people, how many showers you have, whether you're...
So I was kind of looking for an average.
Yeah.
Pretty hard to pay?
Pardon me?
Is it hard to pay?
Hard to pay for...
No, hard to pay.
The average, it can be, because I mean, there's variables, there's quite a few different variables. I mean, it still depends on how much water you use and what type of, you know, what type of systems you have in place, right? So are you using energy-efficient low-flow flush toilets or low-flow showerheads? Are you showering for an hour instead of 15 minutes or three minutes? So, I mean, it's difficult to...
This will help people move into those things, I would think, local words and...
Absolutely, yeah. But we do have, with, you know, kind of going off topic here, we were looking at like our renewable feasibility, our engineer, the engineering consultant for basically said that we're 1,000 gallons, I think, per capita, is how much water we're using, which is
Huge.
Typically, you'd see like 200.
Per day?
Per month?
Per week?
Per person, per capita, per day.
Per day, 1,000 gallons per person per day.
Essentially, yeah. So, I mean, that was like, a little shocking.
But 30% of our water is unaccounted for, is that including that 30%? Well, 30% is like literally unaccounted for, and 30% goes through leaders, right?
It just leaches out.
It's just kind of on the renewable side, so it's a little off topic.
But that's included, that 30% is included? Okay, I'm just finding it hard to think that I could go through 1,000 gallons of water.
But I mean, that's...
This thing lasts to be two days. Half full.
See, I guess, Chris, the question I would have to ask is, if PUB utilities board looks at our rates and doesn't feel we're going to meet that requirement fast enough, they're going to just madly notice what we need to do, am I correct or incorrect?
That's the other issue too, is that the rate increases as they are right now, in our first year, we'll still be in a deficit. In our second year, we'll actually be in a surplus of $6,000. And currently, we reallocate $300,000 to reserves for infrastructure renewal. Now, we can reduce the rate increase if we reduce the amount of money. We can also, would also essentially mean that we're not doing infrastructure renewal as quickly as we are now.
Sorry, just quickly, Chris, we're doing that 300,000 right now?
Yeah.
Right?
Every year.
So you're not, that's not changing?
That's not changing currently.
What's, okay.
I mean, we were looking at even increasing it, but if we increase it, then that means we're also increasing rates more to compensate for that. And right now, in our first year, going to 2017, I'm speaking to you, we'd be in deficit in the first year, still.
So even though we're doing 300,000 a year, we're still losing 30% of the water? All right? So that was my issue before. We're going to jack up the rates. If you have a business, you're a heavy water user, you're a hotel, have an apartment building, first place you're going to go, Tennessee branch. All right? So look what these guys are doing. They've got no plan, we're not fixing the problem, it's not getting any better, and a deal's going to be made. Right? And you guys think taxes, deals happen here, they don't, right? On industry side, they happen somewhere else. So you're going to end up getting more in one spot, and you're going to lose in another spot. That's the reality, but so what I'm going to say is what I brought up last time is that we have an opportunity with these guys trying to fix LaRose. I was told at the last meeting that we can't use gas tax to do a second project. I don't believe that. We got to look at other problems. You guys got to know the top three to five streets that are causing us the biggest problem, and we got to get that 30% down. Because it doesn't matter how high your rates are going to go, if you don't fix the problem, it's going to keep going. And you guys can say, we're going to push it out forever, but we got a problem, we got to fix it now, right? And stop saying, well, sorry, guys, like, it's not a three-year, five-year phase it, right? We got an issue, we better start fixing it. Because if 300 grand a year isn't cutting it, that's not, we're no farther ahead, we can increase the rates. And then again, on your spreadsheet, and I mentioned this to you guys, I think your revenue or your water billings are pretty aggressive, right? It's like a 40% increase over four years. Well, you're right, when water rates start going up, you know what everyone's going to start doing? They'll save water pretty quick, right? You'll get the right effect. So, and I was, I don't know what, I mean, I didn't figure out the sell on how you guys add that up, so rates are going up, but, and you see what's happening when you put new meters in. You see, it's, I mean, that's reality, right? You're going to see those new meters, you're going to find out that have been overcharged, and this is, this revenue number is going to be way off. That's my fear of this. So if we don't figure out the issue, like today, how we're going to get those done? Again, maybe I was wrong when I said we can't use the gas tax, I still don't believe that, but we got to figure out some way to fix some of these issues. Because if we keep losing 30%, and then it's bleeding 30%, well, great, keep charging up, we'll have no business left, and no, we're just, we never get out of the cycle, we're just down there.
Counselor Ford.
So can we explore a little bit, like, I don't disagree with Counselor Gibbs. I mean, our plan for infrastructure renewal, the decision to do LaRose is not based on the pavement is really bad, it's typically based on the pipes are screwed. And that tends to be the driving factor, and while LaRose piping infrastructure is in rough shape, and it costs us money in repairs and all the rest of it, there isn't, my sense is, there isn't likely a great deal of unaccounted-for water loss because of one block or two blocks or three blocks. Do we have, I mean, to Counselor Gibbs' point, if we're going to, we have our plan, and it's based on the priority that the engineers set for us, and it's a combination of needs based on the three or four sets of core infrastructure involved in a street, is there an opportunity to target some of the areas where we have, I mean, we know we have dead-end bleeders on streets, like, we have accounted-for water that just hits the ditch, and we need it to keep our systems from freezing. Are we better to invest, I mean, we are better to invest, I shouldn't say are we, we are better to invest in finding ways to stop that water from hitting the ditch, because, I mean, his point is really valid in that we're going to jack the rates up, right, based on current day usage, and people are going to start paying, and they're going to go, holy crap, and they're going to bring the usage rate down, and then your net revenue comes way down, and then your plan for how we're, you know, coming up with the funding to replace the infrastructure starts falling off, right? Because you're not generating as much revenue as you were, because the people that pay you the revenue go, yeah, I don't want to pay 100 bucks this quarter, I only want to pay 70, so I go buy a low-flush toilet, I make sure my kids don't let the sink run or whatever, right? And so as they decrease their use, your revenues decrease, and now your plan starts to run into a deficit position. Whereas if we targeted, and I know that, I mean, I know water infrastructure, right? I know that there are, it's pretty hard to deal with a dead-end water main. You can't loop the thing around for less than $10 million. Well, we're not spending $10 million to save that kind of money, but we should be targeting any opportunities if we can, where if we can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and recapture 15% of that water that we account for, that we know hits the ditch, then in the five-year plan, that may create some buffer and allow us to change some of those things, right?
Yeah, we spoke, we sat down with the engineer from Jerris, Mrs. Jason, to just kind of review the project, and that's something we brought up as well, is that we're really concerned with some of these dead-end systems that we have in order to keep our mains running, so it's not that it's off our radar.
Yep.
It's definitely on our radar, and we, I fully understand what you're saying, that, you know, the more we can do, the better. Like, if you guys want to just open up the bank and just like, you know, here you go, pull the truck up and say, like, we will fix everything, like, you know what I mean? It's not, you know, I hope that it's not coming across that we, you know, there's a neglect on our part, because LaRose was primarily picked not only for problems with the underground, but also because of the amount of leaders we have on that line too.
Yeah.
So we feel that, you know...
It's not, and I'm not suggesting that our priorities aren't right, I'm just wanting to make sure, right? So if this is going to be the layout, we need, we here, I guess, are telling you, we need some affirmation, reaffirmation, that in fact, this is not just we're going to, we're going to kind of ramp up the rates, the consumers will draw down their usage, and we're not through the process of renewal capturing some of the accounted-for water loss and some of the unaccounted-for water loss. And let's just make sure that we do one kind of broad pass, and go, okay, is there, could we spend a quarter of a million bucks and end up with a pumping station on one of the major dead-end mains and do like Dolphin does, and have water pump into a big tank, and then it gets pumped out at a higher pressure and recirculates it back, and therefore you don't have water loss, you just, it goes into a big vessel and then it comes back out, and then it goes back in and it comes back out, you have water flow, and you don't lose the water, and I mean, innovate, that's not an innovation, that's kind of old school, and that was probably, I'm sure that Cousins didn't just kind of, oh jeez, we forgot about that option, but, you know, from a management of ratepayers' expectations kind of thing, we need to make sure that it's abundantly clear that we've investigated all of those options, and I'm not suggesting that we haven't, I just, you know, I mean, I was around when a lot of this study was done, a lot of these folks were not, I mean, I have kind of a different knowledge of these things than others, but I think that's why you're seeing some hesitation here, right?
And even on my part.
I understand it well.
It's a major.
But, you know, we just want to make sure that all of those bases are covered, and that, and that the recognition that the primary drivers behind these costs are really the unaccounted-for water and the accounted water that hits the ditch. It's not really the consumers, but it's the consumers that end up having to pay. So let's, let's be realistic in our expectation of what they can do, and then let's be, you know, really diligent on our end about capturing any accounted-for and unaccounted-for water that hits the ditch, to the extent that we can.
Since we have a 30-30 split, that's average. I think we have 30 unaccounted for, 30 accounted for of the loss, will be an average in our rural community.
For loss?
Yeah.
Like unaccounted-for loss?
Yeah.
I would say in a, in a community that doesn't have 100-year-old infrastructure, like if it's a 50-year-old community, unaccounted-for loss typically probably be somewhere around 15%, 10 to 15, depending on the nature of the pipes, for unaccounted loss, and there would still be accounted loss.
Then we should have some sort of target, right? So here's what we want to get, is we want to turn around, you're going to sell this to everyone, say our rates are going up. You can say, well, we're here, this is where we are now, and this is where we got to go. Each year you can say, this is what we did, this is how much less is getting lost.
I think too, it's not only just the water that we're losing, but also if there's a water break, that money has to go to us as well. So if we have 62 water breaks, that's quite a hit to the utility.
Is that what we're averaging, when we're figuring this out, that we're going to have 62 a year?
No, that was, that was the big year.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just making sure that that's right.
We're averaging, I mean, we think this year we had a good year, we had, what, 25 maybe?
Yeah, not so good year yet.
That's a good year. I mean, that's, that's still a lot, still quite a bit of money that gets thrown.
Not 62.
It's not just the water that you're leaking away into the earth or wherever.
Yeah.
It's also, if there's a water break, we got to go in, dig it up, fix it, repair it, do whatever, I mean...
So to be, just to be entirely clear about specifically the LaRose, the LaRose renewal, that will create savings in general water loss from water main breaks, because there will be new pipes. It's not to say there will never be a break in a new system, but your breaks become minimized. But also, basically, just about every street, every house on LaRose has a residential bleeder attached to it because of the shallow area of the main, right?
Correct.
And so that averages 16 gallons an hour while they're running. While they're running, if there's 100 houses on the street, that's 1600 an hour, that's a lot more math than I can do right now, but if that renewal, we remove all those residential leaders, because now the service connections in the mains are deep enough that they're not going to freeze, then we're dealing with some of that accounted-for water loss, because all of that bleeder loss is accounted for, and then also some unaccounted-for water loss presumably in that you've renewed the main infrastructure. So, you know, it's important that we highlight that as we prioritize these things, when we do, if we're eliminating residential leaders by dealing with mains becoming deeper and renewed, then we've achieved that goal. So LaRose is a good place to start. That's why it's the number one priority.
Those are our target streets, for the ones that we have the most leaders on, because we want to bring that number down, we want to remove them as many as we can as quickly as we can, but...
Right.
It's, yeah.
You know, maybe it would be, aside from the whole PUB thing, it might be beneficial to have a bit of a presentation, for lack of a better term, from you guys about this renewal, not just this renewal project coming up, but a little bit of a synopsis of like, here's the next three years or the next three projects of renewal, here's why they're targeted, here's what's targeted in the most general sense of the scope that you can provide at that point in time, and might allow for some better understanding of where these things are coming from, if everybody has a slightly longer-term reference point on what's going down.
Coming up, the agenda is some discussion on the website, and so maybe, you know, that might be one area that we could do that, that we might better utilize the ad we have in Fridays of Past Patience, and like, you know, there's lots of ways, I guess we could be looking at that. Anything else? Brian?
All right. I agree with our need, because the cost of, the high cost of our water production for our community is huge, in part because there's high waste. The increases are necessary, because we've been running a deficit budget in that department, and now we're just going to go to zero-based budgeting and charge it back to the users. We're all users, and so then the question becomes is, when is the town going to reduce that 30% to 15%, and how long is it going to take? Because if we're not making that reduction and figuring out how to get that solved, then all we're doing is passing along the shortcomings of the town and the way we've done business in the past to the consumer, but not giving them the extra water. They're just paying more for the water, because between where we produce the potable water to their house, we lose a lot. And it's, it's a, it really is hard for people to understand, well, why should we pay for that? Why shouldn't we just, you know, let's figure it out? Let the town pay for their 30%, let the people that use bleeders pay for their 30%, and we'll pay the other 40. That may not work out in a real world, but we need to be able to at least, and I think it was mentioned here, put together some informations where we can, as well as saying we need to ask you for more money, but we also can show that we're going to, we're taking the correct steps, and many of these things are already in place, it's just communicating it, so that in two years, five years, this is where we'll be, and this is, we expect to see a reduction in the loss of whatever it is. But if we're not, if we're not working hard at that and achieving that, then we're just sort of sticking it to the taxpayers or to the users, and where now, it just goes to everybody, all, it comes out of general revenue to cover the deficit, so...
Okay, maybe that's pretty much what you're... Question?
Yes.
This was a recommendation of the consultant we hired to do this, correct?
Correct.
And basically, what was his comfort level in moving this forward to PUB? The only reason I'm saying that is we're already two months behind in what we initially thought, and I understand exactly where council was coming from with these concerns, but are we going to turn around, await another three months, submit it, and they're going to come back harder on us? That's something I'd want to know. Because these are all great questions, they're future planning, but right now, we've got a big problem, and that's where I would want to know, what is their comfort level as the consultant, moving forward with less than this? That may be something out of all of our control, but I agree, there needs to be a plan moving forward, but I think at this point, because of the previous water breaks, because of the continual repairs, that 300 gets up, eaten up pretty quickly. And when we talk about monies available, we're talking about matching monies. There's always monies available, but that's where we refer when you say there's no money, it's matching monies. I don't want that confusion.
No, and I think, what I was trying to get across is that, that's great, we're trying to get grants and match money, what's happening with LaRose, that's awesome, right? Well, there's money in the gas tax account, and from a development side, if you have a company that's going to do that scope of work there, and you have a few smaller jobs that could help get that down, take advantage of it. That's, that's your matching dollars right there, because to get them to come back to do that job is going to cost you a lot. And I don't know whether it's possible or not, but we have an opportunity, I think we should at least explore it.
Yeah.
Right?
The problem with doing like, let's say, half a job or a part of a job, you may run into logistical issues with the piping itself, like one part of LaRose where, you know, we thought we maybe split it into a few years, like ease the cost of it, as the depth of berry, you know, increases, you're leaving people without servicing potentially if you stop, you know, finishing the entire, the entire length of the street. So if we found a short street to do, kind of like in concert with that, I mean, that's something we could look at.
Because again, it's an opportunity.
Have we been flat-out told that we cannot use the gas tax money, Chris?
No.
No, you can use it, you just don't have a matching fund.
I think his point is, yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah, and that's the point he's making, is that instead of getting matching money, we can take all of our money and do that.
Maybe get a better bank for it. And maybe there's no projects... You've got to take costs out, I'm sure.
Maybe there's no projects outside that would even fit, I don't know, right? I don't know all the projects, and maybe there is, and if there is, then to me, it's worth pursuing.
The costing that's been done for, let's say, the next like seven or eight streets or projects is old, but I mean, can be easily, you know, projected for inflationary.
But you'll know right off the cuff whether one works or one...
Yeah.
So just to be clear then, we want these guys to work in that direction? Is that what I'm hearing then? Everybody's okay with that? Like, let's try and nail maybe some of these futures down?
So we're not dealing with this at all then?
No, I think, I think we have to, we have to move this on, don't we?
And that's kind of the question I have, is are we moving this forward at all? And I agree, the next part needs to be done regardless.
I don't think we have a reasonable move, we just have some questions.
If we don't move this forward, they're going to come back and say, here's your new rate, have a nice day. And we may be quite low on this, and they might come back higher, so...
Yeah, and I think that was just my point that I was going to make in response to Randy, is that the longer we wait, the shorter period of time we're going to have to implement the new rate. Right now, we can spread it over a few years, if we wait, we're going to be hitting everybody with it all in one year, because we waited too long, so...
Yeah. Okay, so we're, like, I'm okay with moving this forward as is, but I just want to know that we have a, we have a plan.
We have a plan moving forward. So we can bring this first reading in?
Hey, Chad, you have a seat.
No, no, I'm fine, like, I have a, well, obviously.
Gets off track, so...
Yeah.
But it doesn't necessarily remain here.
Sorry. James wrote that to you.
Okay, okay.
So first reading for this, and look at a longer-term renewal plan as to how we're going to fix this problem moving forward?
Yep. Okay. Thanks. Item number three, planning and development, request from the recreation.
This is a request from recreation that relates to the renaming of a road. It was suggested that the little road behind the hermit club be called, or be named after Jesse Isles. Everybody was happy to see that they were looking at a sign that was going to be done in her honor, so now they're looking at the process of renaming the road. Our process right now is we have a listing, and anybody that puts a name forward goes on a listing, so when the road names become available, we choose off that listing, so we will add it to the list with council's blessing.
What little road is that? I'm trying to picture this.
It's kind of like in behind the...
Got to go to the gym.
Yes.
You've got to go to the gym! It's actually a...
It does the collective part.
So there is, there is a designated road area there?
Yeah, will be, yes.
Okay. Okay.
It will be, or it is, that's what we're...
Well, it's not a very good road, so we don't necessarily call it a roadway. Until we actually get our parking lot and our plan done, that's where it's at.
Okay, so we'll add it to the list?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, item number four, 4.1, Kelsey Trail Snowriders.
We have a request from Kelsey Trail Snowriders, and this is basically supporting a map and a donation. The request is for $525. In the past, we've had, shared this with the CDC also. This map does get a lot of movement around the community and outside of the community. I do not have money in my budget that would sufficiently cover this, I have a designated budget each year to cover any kind of advertising. I limit them to about $200, because it doesn't take me very far from giving away $500 advertising. I do think it's a good opportunity and snowmobiling is a positive thing in the north and maybe we could look at sharing it with the CDC.
Is there a community enhancement fund?
Yep.
That's the district, Chamber of Commerce. That's what it says.
The CDC did it last year.
Yeah, the CDC.
Not the town of Paul.
That's what we would be.
Oh. So want to co-share with the CDC? I don't, I don't see how they would say no to something like that, but I'd have to bring it to somebody else. This is a very important map to be in. Some of the best snowmobile trails in Canada.
Irregardless, if they don't go forward, can we just go forward related in advertising?
Yeah. Anybody else want to see? It's good.
Even though we didn't budget for it, we're sure.
It's a pretty positive thing in our community.
Just taking it at Jim's expense.
There you go.
The outbreak budget.
Not a good thinking. Four point two, the Pog Golden Ager's.
If you recall, each year, the Pog Golden Ager's, we budget five hundred dollars to support their seniors' community Christmas party. They feel that it's just gotten to be a little overwhelming for them, so they're asking another party to take it on on their behalf. My recommendation is we wait to see what happens and look at what we're going to do moving forward, just in case they don't get it. Or maybe it's an organization that will make the donation on their behalf. So we did budget for it this year, but I say we hang on to those monies until this issue is resolved. I think it's great and it was a wonderful opportunity for us to support the seniors in the community. However, if there's someone else that's willing to step forward, we can use that money elsewhere.
They are actively soliciting help from other organizations.
Which is nice to see.
Yeah.
So it's basically this information and we'll hang on to that until we hear more.
Okay. Four point three, museum.
We have a request from the museum to appoint Connie Wyatt Anderson to the museum board. Connie Wyatt Anderson is very well known in the community. She's a teacher, was teaching at Pasco Retreatation at Joey Ross. Very historical, brings a lot of background to the table, so bringing a resolution forward to pointer to this board.
No issues with that, I'm sure. Four point four, website.
This has been brought forward by council at more than one meeting about how we need to refresh or update our website. And basically, what we've been asking for is examples, what is it you want to see? And I don't know if it means to sit down, but we've gotten a response. I don't know what exactly is you're looking for, we try and compare to other organizations, but what we need to know as administration is what do you want to see? We've also had a request for someone that wanted to buy an advertisement on our webpage, and I think that's a great idea. And it gives us another avenue for funding for paying the website fees.
Who does our website fees right now?
Right now, it's basically done through someone on a Swan River and we do the updating and changes with it. But basically, they do what we tell them to do. If we want a facelift, we tell them what they want, they fix it for us.
Do you have like a contract with them over so many years or is it kind of just?
It's year to year.
Should, I'm just wondering, should council look at some sort of ad hoc committee to review it and come up with recommendations as to the kinds of things we expect of it and then how it could be changed or whatever kind of improvements people might want that could be. Because sometimes, when you get into that, some of it's all about, well, when it was designed, whatever, years ago, it was current and up to date. Now, the way you find information on it is cumbersome compared to what it was before and that. So knowing the kind of information we want and how you want to, what order of preference do you give it on your website is really important. And then also, what's really important is what degree of information do we want the public and counselors and everyone to be able to access on our website where they get a hundred percent of it, not necessarily just what's current.
And no municipalities are the same.
Yeah, everybody has their specialty.
It looks like they all use like the same like server, like the same web designer, but like, yeah, they, they're all very different.
Well, there you go. You guys can be unique and create something totally different, just let us know what that is.
I like Brian's idea. Like, I almost think we should, we should almost have like a communications even committee to kind of come up. Because I mean, that's one thing that we hear a lot, is that we're not transparent enough or we don't get things out there. And we say things and sometimes things happen and we look at them in hindsight afterwards and think like, oh, maybe we could have done that or whatnot. And then something else happens and then it seems like we're at that stage again where we look at things in hindsight and then we're kind of like, oh, well, what could we have done different? And I know we have budget for like a community planner and I don't, like, I know that there was a job description created and I mean, it's a unique thing and it's going to take some time to get somebody in there. But I just think that like we need to do something for communications and like the website could fall in there, even Facebook could fall in there. Maybe we want to look at having someone local doing our website. I know there's a couple of different people who do offer that, having somebody here who knows the town and kind of might be more beneficial than having somebody outside of the community who's trying to give our community what they want, not really knowing the community, right?
I think the good idea about having someone from the outside looking at it, a lot of the information is on our website. For us, day to day, we know where it is because we deal with it day to day. Having a fresh set of eyes that doesn't know where to deal with it day to day is a good idea.
Absolutely.
Because I'm sure, and I'm not making this an insult, but I'm sure council doesn't want it every day to see where did you put that?
Mm-hmm.
Right? So that's why it would probably be beneficial for someone like yourselves to look at it and show us where that improvement needs. Because when it's on there, it's just over here. We automatically know.
Exactly.
So there is that transparency, it's just knowing how to get it.
Well, and I think sometimes, like, for us, even like, for us looking at it, like, I think we do need that, like, expertise of somebody who knows how to make things very user friendly and very accessible to people. Because for me, it's the same thing. I can go on our website and I know how to find almost anything that people tell me that they can't find or that they've tried to go on there. Lots of times, I've gone on there, copied the link and sent it to them so that all they have to do is click directly on the link and it gets them there directly. And I know how to navigate through all the things and find where I need to be, but not everybody does. So I think we still need some sort of like, that level of expertise where somebody knows how to make it really user friendly, but also that, yeah.
Keeping in mind, the person that we did have do the website did exactly what we told them.
Yeah, oh, for sure.
So it is time for that update, I agree.
And you know, and current stuff, you know, like, I don't know, maybe have fun with it, you know, like a pothole patrol or something, you know, this one is like eight feet deep, it only used to be six feet deep. You know, maybe we need to, maybe I want to know what your email address is, or maybe yours are yours or yours are yours, you know? I've got phone numbers on there, I don't think you want me phoning you, but you know, I could drop you a note. You know, just, and just current information, you know, we're going to be working down here and doing that, this is going on and that event's taking place and just, it's just communication. Brian? My one pet peeve about ours and many others is they take up way too much of your front page with a picture and no information. And it's, it's a waste. I want to see the stuff and I want to see the links first before I see the pretty picture. Picture yourself. You're used to seeing the picture every day, so stupid picture. You want to move on, right? And I mean, for people who haven't gone to our website, wait, you got a website? Oh, and they go in and have a look, ah, nice picture.
Yeah, it needs to be.
It's just, okay, who wants to be on this, who wants to be on this ad hoc committee? There we go. We've got Crystal and we've got Brian and Jim, Jim would like to be there.
Okay, so just, so just, so I know where things kind of, no, no, I don't want to be. But just so I know where things, we're going to have an ad hoc committee that's going to discuss some changes to the website. Are we going to get the person that's doing the website involved in the discussions?
We should.
I think that would probably be pretty beneficial.
Initially, we should probably decide what we want and then go find a person to do what we want.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think we should come up with a strategy and a game plan before we go to the person who's going to be doing it and say, say anything, right? Like, we need to figure out what we want so that we can tell the person what we want.
Yeah, I don't know, you're kind of, you're helping one talk to the other, like, I don't know.
What do you think?
Well, it's tough because it's like, I don't know anything about website design. I don't know, like, I can look at the city of Brandon's website and say, man, that's a nice website, but I don't know how, like, oh yeah, I want this website for the town of Paul, but I don't know anything about it.
It's a two-click rule. I need to go where I need to go and I got to get there in two clicks. If it takes me three or four clicks, it's not working.
Yeah, no, I, that's fine, you guys, like I said, I don't know anything about website design.
Again, the gentleman that was working for us, it was all hooked up the way that we did it.
Sure.
And I'm sure having the talk with him. And if you look at the difference in technologies and costs, there's a big difference in what our cost is versus what's on theirs.
No, 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 I.
But that's part of the thing, too.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is like, I can go to the city of Winnipeg's website and say, man, that's a cool website, let's do that.
So how much do we pay this guy to do our website per year?
Let's talk about that, the ad hoc committee.
Very minimal.
I just, I, I'm responsible for about a forty, forty-five hundred page website and I can get anywhere in two or three clicks. But I know the website. Someone who doesn't know it, how to find someone who, you know, is a part-time instructor upstairs on Thursdays who all shake. Good luck. Okay, that was fun. Let's pay some bills, pay bills and accounts.
So I would like to bring forward a resolution at the next meeting as it relates to general checks in the amount of eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight, eighty-seven. Six hundred, almost six hundred thousand of that is our CMP for the period of January to March.
The whole three months.
I knew I had to explain that because that's a big chunk of change. And the rest is just very minimal, like we advanced part of a grant to the recycling center. And KRC also a recommendation to approve a hundred and seventy-three thousand and probably about a hundred and thirty thousand of that is wages. And pay period for pay period ten, ninety-six thousand, three, ninety-one, eighty-seven.
Okay, it's good resolution. Four point six, alarms.
Um.
One more time.
This has been a bit of a cluster. Right now, we have staff that goes in response to the alarms at all of our buildings. And several times in certain areas, we get called out regularly, sometimes twice a week to attend the alarms. And this is getting costly, this is out of our own pocket, the mileage coming in. I've got called out of my place a couple of times and it was because the user didn't turn their, didn't punch in their key, or their key code quick enough. So meanwhile, it took me away from my home, my fuel, my time to come to town and oops, I didn't mean to do that. I think in all reality, I'm not the only one that's responding to these alarms, there's a couple of us. I think that you get a freebie and after that, people should be charged fifty dollars.
Fifty, no? I think you need to make sure that's added to lease agreements if they exist.
Yeah, definitely. Or moving forward, we tell them this is the way it's going to be. I've tried the nice, please don't do that and let us know and it hasn't worked.
Yeah.
And this is beginning to be kind of frustrating.
Is it particularly our own staff or particularly other users of our release?
No, people that lease it, yeah. But irregardless, even if it's our own staff, if it's costing someone to pay, hey, come on.
I did that once.
Once?
Once.
You get one freebie.
Finding facilities to be on where someone from the public is in the building without a staff member being present.
A lot of the times, it's a matter of we will rent with KRC area, we let them in and sometimes they go through wrong doors, set our alarms off, even though we tell them don't. They still do it. We have another building, the Chamber of Commerce building or the fifteen fifty-nine Gordon, that's another one.
Sector council.
Yeah. There's a lot of people accessing it, which means a lot of alarms. At minimal, I was getting two to three times a week in one spot.
Thank you.
And one point, we had three times in one night for our KRC area because someone kept opening the door when they were told not to. So three times.
That was the old KRC area. As in upstairs?
Mm-hmm. So it must be a policy.
All right. Okay, so yes, one freebie starts costing after that and we'll build it into any lease agreement. Four point seven, cell phones. What's up with those?
This is something that's been brought forward. Right now, we had a policy in place that said if you're using your own cellphone for business use, we'll pay you fifty dollars a month for the use of your own phone. We had one manager that was still, or two managers that were still using this, but we've gone to the day and age where it's a texting and voicemail only. These are people that aren't required to necessarily have phones on the weekends, this is just during the day. This might be something as the maintenance director trying to contact his employees and trying to have direct contact during the day. And we're saying we would like to change the policy from fifty dollars, which we believe now, when you look at the contracts, that's a pretty generous amount of money. So we're saying for use of personal cell phones, we would be looking at a fee of fifteen dollars for voice and text only, or twenty-five dollars for all data. It's currently, we're charging the fifty, or giving fifty dollars a month, and we believe that's too high.
So this would change it to forty for?
This would change it to fifteen for those which are text, because most of the people in our organization are text or voice data. So we'll say fifteen, and if you require any kind of internet connection, we'll give you up to twenty-five.
Total, like, not twenty-five and fifteen?
No.
Okay.
Total is exactly that. It's cheaper than radios, we checked out radios.
It is.
At times, we can't get ahold of the employees because they're out of the truck, which makes sense, they're working. So to use their own personal, we would give them fifteen dollars a month or twenty-five dollars a month.
How many vehicles do you have where they would be out in a vehicle?
There's a few that are out in a vehicle, but as soon as they step out of that truck, the radio doesn't come out of the truck. That's part of the problem.
Oh, right, yeah, you've got radios, so.
They're easily accessible when they've got the radio on them, but as soon as they step out of the truck, whether it be at the cemetery or anywhere like that, you don't hear it, so.
It's the inexpensive fix. Oh, I guess then I would wonder, is the radio in the truck the best way to go? Or should we be going to cell phone?
Well, yeah. She's asking us to go to cell phone.
Instead of buying all of our employees' cell phones, though, and giving anybody who may or, like, and the thing is, is I mean, you might need your cellphone one day out of five a week, right? So are we going to buy all of our employees' cell phone with, cell phones when they may or may not use them to the full capacity or simply give a little bit of a reimbursement to people who do need to use their personal cell phone?
Secondly, most of them do not like carrying two phones because they have their own personal phone on them. For us, it was a win-win cost-wise. This was checked in.
I think this is a very affordable solution.
And it's not going to be for every employee by any means, or so is it required?
Sir, did you want to say something?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, we're all good to go on that? All right. Four point eight, street sweeper tender.
Oh, we got our tenders in for the street sweeper. As you could see, there were two tenders, one was from tenant company and one was from Joe Johnson Equipment. The tenant company did not have a completed tender, it did not meet our specs, so that one was thrown out. So we looked at the new twenty sixteen, which is two seventy-seven, nine sixty-nine, taxes included. We budgeted two sixty-five, so somewhere they're going to have to find six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. So moving forward, they've requested that we approve the tender for two seventy-seven, nine sixty-nine, as it will be here in September, whereas the other used ones will not be here till November.
Chad?
I just got a quick question about leasing sweepers. What, I'm sorry, guys, what is it? Do you get any numbers on what it is to lease a sweeper?
The lease sweeper came in, it would be, I think it was approximately forty thousand dollars a year. But apparently, one of the companies are being sold or are taken over by another company and they're not looking at entertaining any new leases right now until all of that has been done.
Okay. So how old is the sweeper we have now that we're replacing?
Nineteen ninety.
What? No, it's not.
It's like twelve months old.
Really?
I would think it is.
Oh.
The oldest one is. Yeah, the oldest one is.
What's the newest one?
How old is the new, that's not the one we're replacing, we're replacing a super older?
Yeah. They're very close. Yeah, like, uh, one's ninety-two, one's ninety-six, ninety-six.
Oh, one looks way near. I don't know anything about sweepers either.
Well, I, I'm just wondering, you know, like, us saving, uh, you know, we're, we're always saying we've got to watch our, watch our nickels, you know, um, if we can save eighteen thousand dollars and take delivery six weeks later on a, on a piece of equipment that's going to last you twenty years, why don't we save the eighteen grand? Being a cheapskate here, that's all.
How badly is, how badly is the existing one, I mean, it's going to make it through the summer, obviously? How much do you use the street sweepers in September, October?
We were, we're planning to just keep it going, and that's coming off those trucks at, at...
And you can tell which one it is, because you can't see it, you just hear it.
And for Andrew, you're going to have a bird, because we would really like the old, uh, street sweeper out at the airport, because we don't have anything until we get our actual, uh, sweeper, so, sorry, yes.
No, it's just, it's a quarter of a million dollar piece of equipment, right?
Kind of an offer of arrangement.
I mean, there's also the issue of, I mean, you, when you buy it new, you have warrant, you have full warranty, full service, full history. If you, if you buy something that's three months used, somebody else got, somebody else got it for four months, the bag drove it, did whatever the hell they wanted with it.
It's a rental, yeah.
Because it was a lease, a lease, so rental, and it was going back. So then you get it, you still have warranty, but you have no history. You don't know what's gone on, you don't know if there's been issues or not, and you don't know, you can't say, "Look, we've had this thing right from the get-go, and we know it's a lemon," or, "We know it's good." So, I mean, for me, the eighteen grand is, it's not a, an unwise decision to get the new one, for me.
So do we need two? Is that the deal? We need two going in town all the time? Is that how it works?
It would make us feel more efficient and able to, there's streets that we never get to, because by the time you do all the main drags, you start on the side streets, you already have to get back to the main drag. So, there's streets that haven't been swept, and I don't even want to venture along. And then with the airport, we're, you know, letting it open, and you could go all summer, basically, they should be going all summer.
Yeah.
In saying that, we did have a meeting with highways the other day, and we did discuss the problem that we have with the street sweeping by the RM and the museum, because that's, that you could do probably three, four times a day, and it creates a huge, huge, huge disaster.
Location of highway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I know we have had a bit of a discussion with that the other day, trying to come up with some solutions, it just makes it difficult, because you have to look at almost a turnoff so that they can stop and, like, drop whatever they need to, but if you do it close to town, there's not the room, so, who's going to police it is the other problem, right? So at least it's in discussion.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Alan? Yeah, because my concern is, we're getting a new one, that's fine, but then we're keeping an old one. We just got a new sidewalk plow, right? We kept the old one. We got two Zambonis that work.
Well, the newest one becomes now the oldest one.
But it's not...
We're dissuaded metal, so if you want us to recycle it, that's fine.
I don't know, I mean, but it's an operating cost.
If it goes down, I will forward the calls for the sidewalks not being plowed to your settlement.
That's fine.
Because people will...
No, it's not, find out, it's not.
It's not, like, it's, it's, it's nice to have the backup, we're trying to share more equipment with the rec department, because we've directed that we need to work more, you know, in tandem, so, having the, the extra, extra sidewalk plows, by no means a bad thing, and I think the dollars that it's actually worth on an open market is negligible to get back, but I know I'm not a hundred percent supportive of this, but...
I just think we end up with an armada of equipment, right? Yeah, I should have led with the Zamboni, that would have been easy.
If you would have led with that, I would have came back to the other con, yeah. No, I, I, I'm, I'm not into equipment hoarding, if that's, if that's, that's not...
All right, that's a hard, that's a hard word, I wouldn't use.
But I, I think having a backup piece, that's, you know, it is age, and one day it will be obsolete, and I think we should just ride it out until the sunset, until it gets to that point. Because it's nice, because we've already had, you know, we had a break, we had some issues, we had a leak, so, we didn't have to stop plowing the sidewalks, and especially if we're in talks with the school division with the snorkel, there is no way we will be able to do it without additional equipment, to be honest, so...
How old is, how old is our newest, uh, street sweeper, before we go get this brand-new?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, okay.
And the sidewalk one that you're referring to, that one, we just went out to the airport, because they don't have a sweeper, and some poor guy has to clean the apron, and look at the runway, getting all the sand and stuff on. So fortunately, we did have that piece of equipment.
I'm, I'm not, you know, it just, we seem to be in a pattern, right? Like, we got two of everything, and that's great, but we can't afford one, so...
Sell the Zamboni, it'd be good. Uh-oh. You want to keep this one, you got to give it away. That's what, that's what it comes down to. So, turn the Zamboni, you can keep the sweeper.
Oh, then I'm going to throw it away.
Nope.
Get rid of it.
We're going to move forward with a resolution to buy the, uh, Brian?
Sorry, Brian? I, I was just going to ask, do we have a, um, life expectancy plan on new equipment like this, so that, so that we know that twenty years out, it's going to be, we better have the money to buy a new one, so that we, we set up something, so money set aside and that?
I'm sure that exists.
I'm sure that does. And then the other, the other concern I have is, is if your comment about we'll run until it's dead, uh, then why are we buying a new one? If it's not dead yet?
Because you could, you could die if it has died, hit online.
Right, and, and also, the other, the other thing is, when you pass off old, your old equipment that you consider not worth using anymore, somebody else gets your problem, and when we're passing it, it's fine if you give it away, but if you pass it to another department, that department ends up with a problem, and it does break down, then they have nothing. And then, so what do they do now? Call you guys up and say, "Hey, forget those other streets."
They can't afford three new street sweepers, right? So it's working its way down the ladder, you know? I remember the first time I started with the paw, I got to drive one of those lovely green vans, you know, that wasn't fun. Started, you know, I was the new guy on the, on the job, so that's what happens.
Still one green truck?
Is there still one?
There is.
See, Wayne driving around, he's looking at the floorboards.
Okay. So we're looking at the two-seventy-seven-nine-sixty-nine one?
We are, and selling the Zamboni. That's, that's a rider, put the rider on the model.
Alan's not signing off on it, he's only sending emails.
Okay, four-point-nine, hydro bi-pole funding.
Jody, I don't know if you want to speak with this, this was a conversation that you had had with Councilor Kim.
Huh?
You guys had talked about the bi-pole money, this was your inquiry.
I don't remember that, man.
He just got killed.
Did you want to bring anything up, Alan, or?
I just, further to what we were talking about with the water, we have some of the highest operating costs in the province, right? So, we look at this place, and our propane bill is, since March, has probably been a mill right worth of propane bills just out of this building. So we need to start looking, and if this hydro advocate thinks out, there's an opportunity to use some of that money to decrease our operating costs. Further along, what I was saying about the water, if we don't fix some of this stuff, then we're never getting out of the cycle. And it shouldn't detract from the five-year plan that they've been provided, and that, that works, but in discussions with hydro, I get the sense that they might be open to that line of thinking.
Of course you would.
See, and I actually, Alan had brought this up, because he had mentioned that maybe we could look at using some of this bi-pole money that was left over. That's why this was on the agenda, and when we met with them Thursday, if you recall, they said, well, they, they didn't see it being a big problem, but they would have to look into it to ensure it could be done, so we're just waiting to hear word back from them.
Because until our heat's on hydro, we don't get any grants, right? We don't, can't apply for any, the window upgrades, and lighting upgrades, and all that stuff, it's all tied to how you're heating your building.
Really? Even when it comes to...
And there's still six years more, more, six more years of funding on this rate, on the bi-pole money?
Yep, it's ten years.
So what is it you're looking for? What's going on? I'm just saying that we, we have an issue, right? Like, we're the, we're going to be the highest water bill, have the highest tax, and we have the highest, and we have the highest operating cost. So we can keep talking about it, and saying, "We need new boilers in here," or whatever it takes to get the, to get our operating costs down, or we can do something.
Were you here, budget time?
I was.
Were you talking about this?
Yeah, we don't, but we keep talking about it, we got to do something about it, right?
Recreation seems to be the hot, the, the hot top priority.
Well, I'm saying the same thing, we got money sitting there, it's not all allocated, it's not used, so why don't we do it? We could buy a boiler next week, the money's sitting there.
I think it's an awesome idea.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, what'd you say?
I said, "I think that I have an awesome idea."
Sure you do.
Oh, it was Andrew's idea?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Entirely.
Very cool.
But it's not, I don't know anything about boilers, is that why it's...
So we have a maintenance director in place, he's working on some stuff, he's counting up the speed, right?
Let's hear what he has to say.
Hopefully, we see something in the next six to twelve months, where he says, "Hey, you know what, we should replace the boiler in that building and switch it over."
But what I'm saying, we're saying, we're going to wait six to twelve months for him to tell us, we're saying, "Here's the problem now, can you look into it?"
I'm sure he's probably already got fifteen problems laid in front of him, with a priority list from one to fifteen, I mean, I don't know where you, you want to suggest interject and say, "Council decided this is your new priority one," or what?
I think one of the priorities is, is reducing our operating costs, right? Because if we don't, if we don't deal with it, it's not going away, right? It's like that demand control on there, I know it's not a high priority in the, in the Wellness Center, but you got a brand-new electrical demand controller that can reduce your electricity usage, and we, it's never been turned on since the place was built. Like, that's shameful, right? We're going to tax, we have, we have more money to do.
I don't disagree, the issue is, the issue is not, it's a lack of human resources, we don't have, we, we've, we've been a turnstile for these positions, so you're not going to find somebody applying for and filling in the job, where they walk in and go, "Oh, demand control," and all that stuff inside out, and they turn it on, you know, I mean, so you can't.
I'm saying we're not...
We just got a body, and they're going to, he's going to be gone in twelve months, and we just keep popping our heads in and going, "Oh, now we want you to do this, and now we want you to do that." I mean, let, let Randy and our administration run the course on this thing, they're, they're bringing this guy up to speed, they've got a priority list, I'm sure. I totally agree that we need to get some of these things under control and movement on them, but we can't just circumvent the processes that exist for administration and go, "We decided that, whatever it is he's doing is great, but we want this boiler changed over here right now."
What I'm saying, Andrew, is that we, and you said it, we just talked about it in budget, right? Next year, we're going to be talking about budget again, and we're three years into this term, and nothing's been done, right?
I don't, I don't, no.
Well...
So maybe a solution is, maybe then we're not talking about the right thing, right? So maybe what we're going to talk about is how it gets done, so if, if it's not a realistic expectation that the new maintenance director, not that I'm, I have no idea what his skills and abilities are, right?
Don't know.
But if, if the reality is that we don't have the staffed human resources to undertake some of these projects, and everybody's got to get real comfortable with tendering these things out for contract.
Yep.
And hiring a contractor to do these jobs. I got no problem using the hydro bi-pole money for that.
There's that money to do.
And maybe that's the discussion or track that, that administration can look at for us, but I'm not comfortable saying, "Hey, we need to assign new priorities for our existing staff," because I know they're already tapped. They got lists that are longer than their arms, and they got priority one, 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 and one, all that needs to be done right away, so, but, I mean, I don't know, Randy, if you have thoughts on, on where that goes, or how that can go, but...
Right now, I just want him to focus on his summer priorities that need to be done immediately, but I'm sure that's definitely on his mindset, too.
So, I mean, again, if you need a consultant coming in to figure it out, then do it, right?
Could this, isn't, maybe this is something where council needs to do a little bit further investigation of its idea, and maybe this is one of those, again, it's an ad hoc committee thing. Take it, put it into, so that, so you have a brief that, that makes some sense, and it's not just dumping, "Oh, we got a great idea, now administration go off and do it."